Meeting called to order. Today's Monday, November 4th. It is now 6:05 PM. Town Council meeting, the town council chambers, 1170 Main Street. Workshop to discuss open meetings.
Councilman Lichardi, Councilwoman Nessier.
Here.
Councilwoman Williamson.
Here.
Council Vice President D'Amico.
Here.
Council President Goslin.
Here.
There is a quorum. Open Meetings Act, Rhode Island general law.
We're making copies of everything.
Forty-two dash forty-six.
Get started again. Go ahead.
Open Meetings Act, Rhode Island general law, forty-two dash forty-six.
Is it APR ten-seven nineteen?
It should be the ten-seventeen one. The top one or the DLC one?
The ones. Oh, that's a ten-seven.
Ten-seven, I'm sorry.
Can you just put a slideshow in the top?
Yeah.
Yeah, which one's that one on? It's under...
It's, um, it's right on the top row, slideshow. You're right next to it.
My blind?
Yeah.
Yeah, on the very top, next to animations and review, on the very top.
Everybody's pointing this way.
On the very top, it says, "Animation slideshow."
And then just from beginning, the one on the left there.
Does everybody have a copy of that? There he is.
Anybody in the crowd want a copy? There you go, okay. Okay, so, just getting started. Everybody knows why we're here, why this workshop's going on. Due to the open meeting violation ruling. So, just so that you want to start.
The one thing I'd like to, before we introduce our guest, is that please do not discuss the issues pertaining to the Wilson matter or the Spodnik matter, as they are still pending in one shape, form, or manner. So, don't ask specific questions of those particular cases. But with that, I would ask that, I guess, Neil, you're gonna be, Neil, excuse me, Sean, are you gonna be the lead guy?
Kayla and I are both.
All right. Kayla, Sean, and Kate are all here from the Attorney General's office. They're all special assistant attorney generals. They work day in, day out with the OMA and the APRA. So, they're gonna do a presentation, and then for each half, there'll be questions. And I guess we can just go from there.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. I think Kayla and I are gonna try to sort of stick to the corners a little bit, so we can both speak to the counselors as well as the members of the audience. And thank you again for having us here. I'm Sean Linus, Kayla Rorke, both from the Attorney General's office. Captain Sadek, our unit chief is here as well. We're really pleased to be here and speak tonight about the Access to Public Records Act as well as the Open Meetings Act. We're gonna try to keep it to about an hour. Certainly, we could go on for longer, but we'll be mercifully brief tonight. And we really do, again, thank you for having us here. You know, we sort of see this as an informal, you know, presentation. So, to the extent that you have questions throughout, you know, feel free to raise your hand. We obviously have time for questions at the end as well. But if you have questions throughout, we're certainly happy to take them as well. So, let's get started with the Access to Public Records Act. And I think most of you can just have the handouts, you can either see it up there or in the handouts as well. And we'll just sort of go right along here. So, the Access to Public Records Act. You know, I think the act itself makes very clear what the Access to Public Records Act is about. And I think most people sort of get the first part of it, right? The public's right to access public records, right? Makes a lot of sense. That's what it's about, about providing access to the public. But there's a second component as well, which the General Assembly has put into the definition or into the purpose of the Access to Public Records Act. And that's also the individual's right to dignity and privacy, right? A lot of the records that we, public officials, have to deal with contain very sensitive, personal pieces of information. We have responsibility and a duty to protect that information as well. We have a movie clip here, and my guess is the sound might not work, but that's all right. We can just sort of...
It may.
It may?
Yep.
I couldn't hear it, you seemed to...
Many times, I definitely could tell you exactly what they're saying.
Go ahead.
It's a clip from the movie Red, and it's about someone trying to access public records. And, you know, this is sort of what they're met with, right? The vault door opening, you know, walking down the long hallway. An underground room full of filing cabinets, no windows.
That's what we have here downstairs.
Right, and when you finally get, you know, the records themselves are all redacted. And, you know, this is supposed to be sort of a humorous clip, I think. A little more humorous with the sound on, but, you know, and I think, I think part of the reason why it's a little humorous is because there's a little kernel of truth to it. I think, you know, for some folks, that's how they, you know, experience the Access to Public Records Act or Public Records Act more generally. You know, and so, when we're talking about providing access to folks, to public records, sort of, you know, keep that in mind, that some people, that's their experience. And that certainly should not be the experience of Rhode Islanders when they want to access public records in this state. You know, another sort of thing here from the New York Times, this is from this summer, again, just something to be mindful of. This was down in Atlanta, Georgia. You know, our law doesn't have criminal penalties. We'll talk about the civil penalties at the end of the public records portion. But, you know, certainly this stuff makes the news, right? Drag this out as long as possible. This was a really egregious case where, I think it was someone on the mayor's staff who was trying to keep records from the public, and it made national headlines. So, again, it's just sort of to be very mindful that this stuff, it's very important to people. It's a really solemn obligation that we have. And, you know, you certainly don't want to see yourself on the New York Times.
So, the Access to Public Records Act applies only to public bodies. And the act defines a public body as any branch or division of state or municipal government. And the second part of that also applies to any person, entity, or corporation acting in place of or on behalf of any public agency. There's two parts there. So, of course, you have your town councils, your school committees, those public bodies, and then anyone acting on behalf of those public bodies as well may qualify as a public body pursuant to the definition in the APRA. So, when you get a request for public records in, the first question you have to ask yourself is whether it's a request made pursuant to the Access to Public Records Act. And we're gonna get into a little bit more of the form of requests a little bit later in the slides, because there's no specific form or magic words that need to alert you that it's an Access to Public Records Act request. Normally, it's just a request to access documents. And that's what, at the bottom of this slide here, it says that you need to provide documents in response to a records request, not narratives or summaries. So, there's no requirement under the APRA to provide a narrative response to a question that somebody is providing you or requesting that you answer. That you need to provide documents that would be responsive to that question. Or, in the alternative, if you don't have documents responsive to that, but maybe you know where to direct them, you could, under the APRA, you could say, "I don't have documents responsive, but maybe go to this public body." And that would be permitted. When you get a request in, you ask yourself, "Are they requesting public records?" And now, the broad answer is that yes. So, documents that we have within our government warehouse is that they're public records, subject to whatever exemptions that may be applicable. But the broad definition of a public record is material, regardless of form, that's made or received in the transaction with official business. That's pretty much everything that we do within the government, state or local. And then the second part of this is also any records maintained or kept on file by your public body that are made in the transaction of official business. So, it doesn't necessarily mean documents that you created yourselves within your public body, but anything you receive or maintain within your files. So, it could be emails sent from another agency or another department, maybe a report from a consultant. Those may be subject to the Access to Public Records Act and could be disclosed. So, a reasonable search, this is one of my favorite slides. There are no bright line rules, so what qualifies as a reasonable search under the APRA? So, when you get an Access to Public Records Act, the first questions that you need to start asking yourselves are, "Where do I look?", the very basic question. "Where should I look?", "Who would have documents responsive to these requests?", "Could it be a particular department?", "A particular person, maybe?", "Does that person have an assistant?", "Are there many assistants?", "Was there a previous employee who had access to these records?", "Are they in my archives?", You need to cast an extremely wide net in order to look, conduct a reasonable search for public records. Because if we get a complaint in our office that maybe somebody files against your public body saying, "I think they have records that they didn't turn over to me", we're gonna ask your public body to provide affidavits to us attesting to the search that you conducted. And we've had situations where a public body found responsive documents after we asked them to conduct them or thorough search. So, I think it's easier to put the work in upfront and ask these hard questions. I can't tell you how our criminal division thinks that, how annoying I am, because I keep asking them and asking different people what sort of documents they may have. But you're better off, so that way, if you ever have to attest to the search that you conducted, you have everything to back it up. And now, this is just a fun little graphic that we have that sort of exemplifies everything that I was just talking about. So, when you get an Access to Public Records Act request in, where do you look? You look everywhere. Your bulletin boards, your filing cabinets, your computer, your neighbor's computer. Maybe you have to get IT involved. And hopefully, you don't have to look in the trash, but maybe sometimes you do. Just to show you that we need to cast a really wide net when we're doing a search.
So, there really is no requirement, obviously, there's a requirement for that, access to documents. But sometimes we'll get a question of, "Well, I got this request in, and I don't have documents really responsive to it, but maybe I could create some." Do I have that obligation to do that? And the answer is, as a general matter, no. There's no requirement to reorganize, consolidate, or compile data that's not maintained in the requested form. There is an exception, however, that I think is becoming more and more relevant. And that's if you have records in an electronic format, which I think is probably a lot of the records that we deal with. If they're in electronic format and it's not unduly burdensome to reorganize, consolidate, compile, then you wouldn't have to do so under the Access to Public Records Act. We have a scenario that I think sort of puts that into play a little bit. So, just sort of keep that in mind. We'll get back to that in a second. So, a couple of quick scenarios here, just to sort of put some of these ideas into practice. And the first one is, we get this question a lot. You know, "I'm a member of a public body, we have a request that's come in, you know, I understand I have to search my work email, my work files. Do I have to also search my personal private email?" What do we think? Yes, no?
Maybe.
Maybe, exactly. That's, you know, when a lawyer asks you a question, the answer's always maybe, right? You know, it comes down to, is that private email being used in connection with a transaction of official business, right? You know, the line around our office is, it's like Ghostbusters, you don't cross the streams, right? You keep your work email very separate from your personal private email. You know, I never, I never let anything go to my personal email. All my work stuff's in my work email. We get an APRA request in, and it, you know, my emails are responsive. I only have to check my work email. Because those are the only ones that are made in connection with a transaction of official business. So, this list example, right? Request asks for a list, "No list is already maintained." Let's get back to the slide we were just talking about, reorganizing, consolidating, compiling. We got a request a couple of months ago for a list of all prosecutors in our office. So, doing the reasonable search thing, right? I went right to our HR folks, and I said, "Do we have a list of prosecutors?", and they said, "No." You know, is that sort of the end of inquiry? No, not really, right? You gotta sort of ask those next step questions. And I said, "Well, all right, maybe we don't have a list of all the prosecutors in the office. Do we have a list of maybe everyone in the office, right? Payroll, other HR-type, you know, Excel spreadsheets?" "Oh, yeah, sure, we have a list, but it's everybody in the office." Okay, well, you know, it's an electronic format, right? It's an Excel spreadsheet. Is it unduly burdensome to reorganize, compile, consolidate into a new list? And it really wasn't, right? You Ctrl-Five, you find all the criminal folks, you copy, you paste them into a new document. It took all of three minutes. It was not unduly burdensome to do so. Because it was an electronic format, we were required to do so. So, that's really sort of the analysis you have to go through when it comes to reorganizing, consolidating, compiling documents. You know, we do this, we do this talk a lot of places, and we always really emphasize this slide because I think this is one of the, they're all important slides. But this is one of the more important slides. And because, I think in part because it comes up so very often, right? Someone is asking for their own case file, right? We had a situation a couple of months ago. A woman was asking for criminal-related files about the death of a family member. And, you know, there's sort of two competing ideas here. The first is that, under the Access to Public Records Act, the idea is if it's public, it's public to everyone, right? It's not public to that one particular quester, it's public to everyone. And I think the real best sort of illustration of that is the city of Providence. If you go on their website, the public records part of their website, you make a request, everyone can see your request, right? It posts right up there on the website. If they respond with documents, they respond right to your request right there. Everyone can see those documents, right? They're public to everyone. And so, I think, you know, under the Access to Public Records Act, you know, those documents about the death of a family member, they're really sensitive, personal documents, right? Really, really, you know, tense documents, probably not something that would be released under the Access to Public Records Act. There's a lot of privacy interests there. So, you know, I think the answer under the Access to Public Records Act was, you know, respectfully, these documents are exempt. And I think that's sort of where a lot of folks, they're exempt, they're not public to you just because you're asking, right? But you can't let the Access to Public Records Act be the enemy of common sense, right? This was this own woman's file, really. It was her family member, it was her privacy interest, really, that we were protecting by not providing it. And so, we said, "Okay, look, yes, under the Access to Public Records Act, we have to provide you a response. The response is they're exempt, right? Privacy interest outweighs the public interest." You know, nonetheless, we understand and recognize that these are probably documents that you're entitled to. You know, they're about your family member. So, outside the Public Records Act, we're gonna provide them to you notwithstanding. And, you know, I think, I think letting sort of common sense come in and say, "Yeah, you know, these are your files." Maybe under the Access to Public Records Act, they're not public records, but nonetheless, we're still gonna provide them another way. I think that's a really effective way of sort of managing these requests, you know, preventing these things from becoming complaints and issues sort of after the fact.
So, the Access to Public Records Act requires that every public body outline procedures for receiving requests, whether they be in written form. But there's no requirement that a request be made on a public body-specific form. So, you can't deny or tell a person that they can't submit a public records request because they did put it on their form. And the APRA is explicit with that. And then, if any documents are readily available pursuant to the Administrative Procedures Act or if they're just readily available within your public body, then a written request doesn't need to be made under the Access to Public Records Act for those types of documents, because they can be provided almost immediately. So, a person also doesn't need to provide a reason that they're requesting access to the documents or their identity. Now, the identity one will get tricky, and I'll get into that in a second. But you can't deny a person access to records because they refuse to tell you why they want the records. The "why" isn't the important part of it, because as Sean has been saying, the documents are public to one person, they're public to everybody. So, the reason doesn't matter. And then, as I said, a person doesn't need to provide their identity or their phone number, their email, their address, or really any way for you to contact them in connection with an Access to Public Records Act request. Now, it's not the easiest thing to deal with when somebody doesn't provide you any sort of contact information, but they don't have to. And now, this is our form that we use at the Attorney General's office. And as you can see, name, address, telephone number. And then, on our new forms, we also have email over there. They all say optional, so they don't have to provide that. And they don't have to use this form, but this form helps us process these requests. Identity is certainly helpful when we're processing these requests. But at the bottom of our form, we have a little copy up there that says, "If you don't want to provide us any contacting you, any response will be available at the principal office or at our front desk of the Attorney General's office." And we're gonna number the request for you. So, when you come in and you ask for, "I want the status of request number one", they'll be able to identify what it is.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Let's just say Jane Doe contacts a town clerk, wants the information. It is public, and they're gonna come pick it up. If you don't get an ID from the person, how do you know who Jane Doe is asking to come pick this stuff up?
I mean, it could be tricky, but as we said, if it's public to one person, it's public to everybody. So, if you want your documents, if Jane Doe contacted you or called you and said, "I want these documents", I say, "Okay", they'll be in a, in an envelope marked Jane Doe at our, at our front desk.
And Jane Doe comes and picks them up, and then the real Jane Doe comes in.
I'm Jane Doe.
Jane Doe comes in two hours later.
Well, then I would just have an extra copy of those documents.
Okay.
Many requests that could come in could be quite lengthy, voluminous. And the act requires fifteen hours worth of time for free to assess, you know, what the request is.
One hour.
Well, I'm sorry, one hour.
Okay.
Thank you. But, thank you, oh God, that'd be... One hour.
So, who's everybody from?
But at that point in time, the department could say, "This is gonna take fifteen, twenty, thirty hours. We're gonna need X amount of dollars before we start this project." Because, you know, the person has to pay for it. If someone doesn't identify who they are, how, you know, how do you go about saying, "Okay, you know, this is gonna cost you $200. You know, we don't have the contact information, we don't have, you know, we're not gonna start a project, you know, like that without having information." So, how do we go about really assessing someone like that?
And I have something similar to that right now that I'm working on. The person submitted a pretty broad request. And I needed to put down like a prepayment request and also extend our time to respond. And they did provide their, their contact information. So, as I said, like on the bottom of our form and on our website, it says that if you don't provide your identity, any sort of communications will be at our front desk. So, we numbered it, you know, request number five. And I wrote a letter to quester, just a general, general term there, outlining, "This is gonna be our search, this is why it's gonna take this amount of time. We're requesting this amount as a conservative prepayment estimate." And I dated it, the date that we put it at our front desk, and I just keep tracking it and keeping up with our, our main office person down there. See if request number five picked up yet? And that's just really the best way that we have found to deal with certain situations like that. That works for us, of course.
So, you know, part of the, part of the rub, I think, with the Access to Public Records Act is the timeframe. And so, you know, I think if you've gotten something and you're not sure, maybe it's a public record request, I'm not sure. You know, the timeline really comes into play, and that's why it's always important. If you think, you know, if you think that they're asking for documents, even if they use the words "Access to Public Records Act", even if it's not on your form, you know, the clock could still start ticking. So, you really need to be careful and make sure that you send it to either your legal counsel or whoever handles your, your public records requests. And here's, here's why. There's, basically, you have to do one of three things within ten business days of getting a request. You either extend the time or deny access to the records or you grant access to the records. But one of those three things must be done within ten business days. You know, it's not, it's not acceptable to say, "Well, we didn't have any records, so that's why we didn't respond." If you don't have records, you know, that's, that's a response. You have to provide that response within ten business days. You know, as Kayla alluded to earlier, you can extend the time. There's procedures for extending the time, but essentially, for good cause, you can get an additional twenty business days, a total of thirty business days. But really, that's, that's sort of a hard stop. After thirty business days, that's it, you have to provide a response. And so, certainly for, you know, the more voluminous requests, obviously, prepayment may be coming into play a little bit. But, but even with that, you don't get more than the thirty business days.
So, in your example, Kayla, number five hasn't shown up. When do you start your clock ticking?
So, pursuant to the APRA, if you're waiting for prepayment, then the clock sort of pauses on your request. You still only have that thirty business day window. But if I put request number five at our front desk on business day five, then I still have twenty-five business days left to respond once I receive prepayment.
Once you receive, but that could be day forty?
Could be.
Okay.
But, but I mean, that's a good question, because it comes down to sort of how do you manage these requests, right? And so, we have somewhere, we know the particular quester, we know that they're very likely to pay, so we've sent out a prepayment. And yes, the clock technically has stopped on day five, right? But we know that maybe it's only gonna take two or three days for them to give us a check. So, yeah, we bought ourselves two or three days where the clock has stopped. But we know we have that thirty business day hard stop, so we're gonna start working on it right away. For other sort of cases, maybe you don't know if they're gonna prepay. Maybe it doesn't make sense to sort of put the resources in until they do. But again, that all sort of goes into how you manage these things.
So, all of us keep a list of all of the ones, all of the APRA requests that may be tolling or paused? So, that way, there's more than one pair of eyes on it and aware that there are requests out there that may become active at any point, so if we don't miss that, that thirty business day line.
Moving on, we're almost, we're almost finished with the Public Records Act. So, remedies, right? What can happen if there's a violation? Well, a court can impose a civil fine of $2,000 for a willful and knowing violation, $1,000 for reckless violation. Again, a court can order injunctive relief, and that means the court can order release or production of those documents. And of course, attorney's fees, which we all, I think, be much more than a thousand or $2,000. So, that's sort of the, the Access to Public Records Act. Are there any sort of questions on that before we continue?
Yeah, could you guys... I'm an audience plant. You know, obviously, we're in a short timeframe, so we don't have a lot of time to get into the exemptions. But could you just very briefly touch on exemptions under the APRA and kind of where it can be found?
That's a great question. Yeah, so, so the act actually does give, obviously, you know, everything is sort of a public record, right? Made in connection with transaction of official business, maintained or kept on file, it's a public record. So, how can you ever withhold anything, right? And there's, there's a number of exemptions, so there's actually twenty-seven of them in the act. They're delineated out, and that's something I think you really wanna sort of talk to your legal counsel. But, you know, I think a lot of them sort of make sense, right? Attorney-client privileged information, that's not gonna be something you, you have to release. We were talking about earlier, sort of very private information, where there's a big privacy interest. There's no real public interest in disclosure, and that's something that's, that's part of the exemptions as well. But, you know, consistent with sort of how the act is structured, right? Everything's a public document unless it's exempt. You know, the exemptions are construed pretty narrowly. So, it really has to fit very tightly within the exemption. Yes, this is definitely attorney-client, you know, privileged, you know, material. Yes, it fits right within that exemption. Because if it doesn't, obviously, then you construe it in favor of transparency.
I got one question. You're talking documents, so we've had requests in the past. We have surveillance throughout the building. Can the general public just come in and say, "I want a copy of such-and-such a day on such-and-such an hour"? Is that public record?
Well, we, we use the term "documents" because that's what we normally see, but the definition of a public record actually says "material regardless of form". So, a person can make a request for pretty much anything, but then it would be up to us to say, "Do any exemptions apply?", "Are there any confidentiality concerns?", and then potentially hand over anything that may be responsive that's a public, that would be available to the public. Whether, and there may be like a prepayment required for any sort of video flash drive or something.
Has that happened, have you seen that come up before with somebody requesting?
Somebody requests video, not, or...
Not from us, but we are seeing a little bit more, I think, in part because more things are becoming digitalized. And certainly, redactions in video, I think, are sort of a technological hurdle for a lot of public bodies. But it's sort of, I think it's an emerging, emerging, sort of cutting-edge area, yeah.
So, that would be the question. So, for instance, say something was under investigation. And those people who are filing the, the part of the subject of the matter, they come in, ask for a request of the video. Shouldn't that go through like the police department or whatever? Or should that go through the clerk's office? Should the clerk be giving out video of whatever's going on in town hall? There could be employee matters going on. There could have been an argument between two employees. You know, but there's, shouldn't that be a request from either lawyers or somebody else, not, not the individuals?
I mean, you know, obviously, anyone can make the request, doesn't even have to be somebody involved with it. And, and if you, you know, maintain or keep on file that surveillance video, then I think the request is properly addressed, you know, to the town clerk as opposed to the police department. That, of course, doesn't mean that you can't, when you get that request in, go talk with the police department and say, "Hey, do you have security concerns? Is this, you know, an ongoing matter? Are there other reasons maybe it would fall within an exemption?" But if, certainly, if it's maintained or kept on file, I think it's, you know, considered part of what they could request under the Public Records Act.
If, in fact, the videotape or the audiotape is available in the public domain because it's on the website, doesn't the town still have to respond and provide that same information in whatever format is available to the person making the request, even though it's available?
Right, and sometimes, sometimes that just means it's easier to get it. Sometimes we get requests, "I want your annual report." Turns out, we put it on our website in a PDF form. All I have to do to respond to the request is go to our website, download it, you know, attach the email.
But the improper response would be, "It's on our website, look it up yourself."
Who do you have to provide access, right? Exactly.
Website address?
You know, it's about providing access to documents sort of writ large. And I think you don't wanna sort of presume that everybody necessarily has access to it or, you know, it sort of depends how the request is made. If they say, "I'm, I'm fine receiving the request, you know, linked to it on your, I know it's somewhere on the website, I can't find it", then of course. But if they want the copy of the video, I mean, they're certainly entitled to request it in that format.
Some ones are tricky, they don't always work.
If I can jump in for a minute, I think for, for so many of these, you know, APRA matters, just communication between the quester and the public body can prevent a lot of problems. So, especially if it would be, you know, cost and, and time-consuming to compile everything and it's already on the website, instead of assessing prepayment, for instance, you could just say, you know... instead of assessing prepayment, for instance, you could just say, you know, I can provide this to you, but you could also just get it on the website. Do you wanna do that? And just, you know, whether it's a phone call, or an email, or a letter, and just talk back and forth with the requestor. You know, like Sean said, some of those just common sense measures that can sometimes prevent things from snowballing or becoming greater issues.
Did you have a question, sir?
Yes, sir. Without mentioning specific names, but my question is, there was a, I think there was a former legislator who requested information, charged X amount of dollars, and was determined that they should not be charged. Were there any situations where a person should not be charged and the information should be provided without asking for reimbursement?
You know, that's a great question, and I think, I think it's obviously up to the public body whether they wanna make that assessment of fees or not, you know. Sometimes we'll have a request where, yes, the first hour is free, it's gonna take an extra hour to do it. Do we really wanna charge fifteen dollars, you know, for that second hour? Maybe not, right? Maybe then we just provide it. But by the same token, you obviously don't wanna treat some requestors as more entitled to go without cost than others. And certainly, I think I know what you're referring to, which is the, you know, the court in that case did, they're entitled under the Act to waive the fees. And so certainly, if someone felt that the fees weren't appropriate, or that there was some public interest that required the court to waive the fees, they're certainly entitled to do that.
With a written form and response, you can understand what the actual request is. If someone has a verbal request, let's say, after a meeting and getting ready to leaving, somebody says, oh, by the way, I would like X. You know, it is whatever it may be. That's a request for a document, or documents, or something. Could be, I want all of the budget for that, whatever it may be. When it's a verbal request, it's, I think it's more, maybe more difficult at times to be responsive, because, you know, what they may be asking when you're hearing are two different things. How do you really process verbal requests when, you know, someone's saying something, someone's receiving something? You know, how do you do that? That's my question. How's that the best way to handle that, because?
Of course, so part of our, the APRA procedures that our office has put in place or people make their requests, is that the request is required to be in writing. So that can be something that your public body requires, that it needs to be put in writing. But if somebody makes a verbal request to you and you're gonna accept that as an Access to Public Records Act request, then I would have some way of getting in touch with them to solidify what that request is, whether it's following up with an email, hey, I consider your request as seeking these documents related to fiscal year nineteen. Let me know if this is not what you want, or giving them a call, just to make sure that you have something that actually clarifies exactly what this requestor is seeking, to help you and your team do your searches, and also to help the requestor get access to the documents that they really want.
You mentioned that you, the receiver would believe it's an APRA request. Sometimes somebody could say something, you know, is this a request, or just saying something? How do you determine what is a APRA request and what is, somebody's saying something, you know? I want, you know, just, you know, whatever it may be.
Right, so.
What you're gonna request, how you know what's legitimate, what's not?
Absolutely, so as I was saying before, there are really no magic words. That somebody doesn't need to send you an email and say, I'm sending this pursuant to the Access to Public Records Act. So we get requests all the time, for just, I'm requesting documents pursuant to, or that relate to this particular criminal file. And we like to err on the side of caution, and we treat everything as an Access to Public Records Act request, unless the document or documents that they're requesting are readily available to the public, or readily available pursuant to the Administrative Procedures Act. Because if they're, something quick, as quick as getting a form from your town clerk's office or somebody requesting a birth certificate, then obviously, we wouldn't treat that as a public records request.
But really, yeah, it's a request, but it can be verbal, it doesn't always follow the right.
Exactly.
So how do you know when the clock starts with that, then? If there's, because I mean, they don't have to fill out the form, so how is there like a magic number of figuring out when the ten days are over if you're not positive when the request was made?
So usually, it's the day of receipt. So if it's sent by email, that's easy.
That's easy to figure out, of course, yeah.
If it's sent by regular mail, then it's not the date that it's normally dated on the letter itself, it's the date we stamp it in as received on there, that's when the time clock starts. So normally, when we send our responses as well to the person, we say, you know, you sent this, it's dated October eighteenth, but it was received by us on October twenty-second. That way, they're clear as to when the clock started for us.
But if somebody just walks into the office and says, I want this, then is that when you should obviously fill out the form? So on your, on our own side, fill out records, so that way we can have?
I would do that, a paper trail is your best bet. We've had people submit APRA requests on post-it notes, although it was small, we were able to stamp it in as received that day and tap it onto another piece of paper. Whatever sort of helps your internal tracking.
Yeah, and I think sort of the other thing along with that is, you know, nine times out of ten, if you say, hey, you know, we really prefer you to do this in writing, I know you've come in, you wouldn't mind writing it down, nine times out of ten, they're more than happy to do that. And then I think it really sort of benefits everybody, because then you have like?
Yeah.
I have a question about redacting. I've had, occasionally, we always get them in writing here, I have never gotten a verbal one, but I've had people refuse to pay because they've asked for unredacted records. And the department I send the request to redacts. So they come to pick them up, and they're like, no, I asked for unredacted. And I'll try to explain that there's certain things that can be redacted, and that's not a good enough answer. And what happens is they don't take it, and if it's a lot, could be hundreds of dollars, they're just leaving after all the work's been done. You might get a little deposit, but you may not get the three hundred and forty dollars that's due with the twelve hundred pages and ten hours, because we redacted. And I have more than a few that are a couple of years old that no one ever picked up, seven hundred and fifty dollars, things like that, because, oh, you redacted, we asked for unredacted, we don't want them. When tons of work has been done, you might get a deposit, but you don't ever, they leave it there, and you don't ever get the full amount.
You get the full amount.
Not upfront, you don't?
Yes, you can.
Well, I don't know how many pages it is.
You can assess it like a conservative estimate for prepayment. So if you assume that it's gonna take you, you know, seven hours to do the request, and then it takes you, you're at seven, and you think it's gonna take you another three, and then there's gonna be more review time, then you are permitted to send another request for prepayment outlining the search that you've conducted, and maybe even providing the documents that you already made for, and saying, we still have some more time because we haven't been able to retrieve or review everything that may be responsive. So just piecemealing it sometimes.
Okay, but.
But people who don't.
Vice versa, if you only, if you took seven hours and you had it done in four, you can refund.
You can absolutely reimburse people who're lucky like that.
Well, usually, it would be a case of, I mean, there's times I'd never expect twelve hundred pages. So you may say, all right, we need seventy-five dollars, and then it's three hundred and fifty dollars. And you suddenly have it on your desk within the ten days, and you're looking at it, and it's redacted. And my question is about redacting. I mean, I can't make someone pick it up and pay for it. But with redacting, they ask for unredacted, and the story now, there's redacted records. How do you get around that one? Is there laws that allows to redact, like police files? They're almost, everything's redacted on them. A lot has been redacted on a thing I had today. So much was redacted in financial records. The person just said, I don't want them, and that was it.
Well, there's certain information pursuant to the Access to Public Records Act that is exempt from, or can be exempt from disclosing to the public. And there is, of course, certain information that's required to be kept confidential pursuant to a lot, you know, healthcare records, social security numbers, things like that. So I think under the APRA, you are permitted to do redactions, and just because somebody says they want unredacted documents, I would say that pursuant to the APRA, you're not required to provide them unredacted documents unless that information is completely public, but there may be exemptions that apply to certain information. But I think going through those documents, it's necessary to say what information can be public, what information is public, and what information can be exempt or is required to be kept confidential. You need to really go through those documents. So maybe some of the redactions you have on your desk right now, maybe they're too broad. Maybe there is some information that you could provide that somebody redacted that may not have to be redacted. But there's nothing under the Access to Public Records Act that requires you to provide unredacted documents if it contains information that can be exempt or is required to be kept confidential.
And, you know, just sort of along with that, I think it's sort of what we've been talking about, which is best practices and managing expectations. And so when we assess prepayment, especially if it's something that's relatively obvious, we had a request for all of particular attorney's emails with someone else in our office, who was also an attorney, right? Those are most likely gonna be attorney-client, attorney-work product. So, you know, we said, okay, we think it's gonna take whatever, five hours, but just so you know, you know, this is five hours for search or retrieval and review, it may be redacted. You know, we haven't done a final review yet, but we think it's likely that there's gonna be attorney-client material and attorney-work product material, you know, just so you know. And I think as long as you sort of manage expectations upfront, then there's really no surprises sort of when they get their records, and oh, what do you know, some stuff's been redacted.
And providing a requestor with as much information as possible related to their request is the best way to handle these, such as, you know, it's gonna, it already took me, I used your first free hour, and this is what I did during the first free hour. In the next five hours, this is what I anticipate happening, or why I'm gonna need five hours. And then if you get to, you know, four hours, fifty-eight minutes, and you think it's gonna take another four or five hours, then you send that second letter outlining what you did and what you plan to do.
So I think, I think we should probably move on, because I know we're trying to be respectful of everyone's time, and we still haven't even hit the Open Meetings Act, so what's?
Could I just, and you might hit it in the Open Meetings Act, the willful and knowing. Can you define that for us and make us understand what that, that's all about?
It's, you know, it's part of the Open Meetings Act as well.
Fine, perfect.
Okay, maybe we'll address it then at that point.
Perfect, perfect.
Very good. So the Open Meetings Act, so again, we'll first start out with what's the purpose of the Open Meetings Act? And again, I think most people sort of get the first part, right? Public business has to be reformed in an open and public manner, right? I think most people kind of get that, right? That's why we're here tonight, open and public manner. The second component, I think people understand, and maybe it's a little less explicit or known, is that citizens be advised of and aware of those decisions, right? It's not enough that we do the business in public, citizens have to know that it's gonna happen and know that it happened after the fact. And so that really comes out in what the OMA itself requires, right? So of course, we have open meetings, right? Everything that the public body does has to be in a public meeting. Very limited circumstances prescribed by the Act when the meeting itself can be closed. It's closed session, executive session. We talk about people being aware of and advised of, of course, that's your notice, right? Ahead of time, you have your annual notice, that's the calendar year notice, it says, hey, we're gonna meet every third Thursday of the month. You have your supplemental notice, right? Forty-eight hours ahead of time, here's our agenda, this is what we're gonna talk about. You have your notice, you have your meeting, and then after the fact, meeting minutes, right? People could then, maybe I wasn't at the meeting, I wanna know what happened. You can read those meeting minutes and get a sense of what happened. Really, those are sort of the three components, notice, open meetings, and minutes. And so, you know, sometimes we'll hear questions of, well, I wanna post the notice, supplemental notice, I know it's forty-eight hours, can I post it seventy-two hours at a time? Absolutely, right? We always encourage, you know, more than what the Act requires. The Act is just a floor, not a ceiling. You wanna go above and beyond the requirements, perfect, great, we always encourage that.
So the Open Meeting, Meetings Act applies, excuse me, when three things happen. You need a public body that has a quorum, and they have a meeting. If one of those three things is missing, then the Meetings Act doesn't apply. So when we define those, a public body under the Open Meetings Act is defined as any department, agency, commission, committee, council of state or local government, and any subdivision of any of those departments or agencies as well. And then a quorum, very simple here, it's a simple majority of your board, if you have a five-member board, a quorum would be three, seven-member board, a quorum would be four. And now, this is where it gets tricky. A rolling or walking forum is something that a public body should absolutely avoid, like the plague here. So a rolling quorum is a series of individual communications between individual members of the public body that would collectively represent a quorum. So that can be a little confusing. So the way I like to say it is, I'm a member of a five-person public body, okay? Sean is also on that body, and I choose to have a telephone conversation with Sean, telling him my feelings about something that's coming before our board later in the week. And I'm really steamed, and I'm telling him how I'm planning on voting and what my thoughts are. And then Sean has a telephone conversation with somebody else on our board, says, oh, Kayla's really mad at this, this is how she's gonna vote, this is what I'm thinking, and I think this is what we should do. Even though I didn't talk to that third person, because Sean looped them in, the three of us just formed a quorum and had a discussion about something that our board has jurisdiction and our power over, outside of a public meeting. So we're part of a public body, we formed a quorum, and we had a meeting, and now we're in trouble.
What if, what if you, social media comes into play nowadays, what if you publicly stated how you were gonna vote to everybody? Would that be considered, would that be in Open Meetings violation? If you publicly said, this is how I'm gonna be voting next Tuesday?
So the problem comes into play when there's a meeting, and that meeting definition, we'll get to in a minute. But if you're posting it on social media, and then two or three other members of your body decide to comment on it, and start talking about it, that's where you run into some major breaths.
Just to follow up, so.
There you go, just ignore each other.
An elected, an elected government official, town council, school committee, speaking to their constituents on social media, saying that I am going to either support the budget, or I'm not gonna support the budget. That politician can put that out there, but as long as nobody else on the board states anything, there's not a problem.
So you have the public body, member of the school committee, and then you need a quorum, and then a meeting. So if a forum isn't formed by those discussions, then the Open Meetings Act wouldn't apply. It only starts to kick in when you have that quorum of the public body.
So the elected official can profess what he's going, or she's going to do.
Because that single person wouldn't qualify as a public body themselves under the Open Meetings Act, just whenever the quorum comes into play.
So for instance, he's all over social media saying how he feels, we all read it, now we know how he feels, but we don't comment on it, it's still not an open meeting violation, even though we might have read it?
I, no, I would say best.
As long as I don't comment on it.
Right, because you need that collective discussion to form a meeting. So it would be the same if you stood up in the middle of the mall, and you were all in the mall, and you heard him say.
Or if it was in a newspaper article.
Put it down.
Same thing.
Okay.
So in your. The thing with the law is too, is it's all very fact-specific. So, you know, if you have a situation like that, it might depend on the circumstance, but there's evidence that there is an intent to circumvent the OMA by, I'm gonna post here, and you're gonna post here. You have to always look at, I think, the collective totality of the circumstances. So just whenever one member is putting a discussion or thought out there by themselves, there's always just a potential that it could trigger a discussion in the forum. So you always just have to proceed with caution.
So let me throw, I'll go ahead and.
No, I was just gonna, I was just gonna ask, so in your example, Kayla, you talked about talking to Sean, and Sean talked to Kate. Suppose you talked to Sean, and then you talked to Kate. Same problem?
I would say yes, because we're talking about my thoughts and sharing them with another member of our body, so if there's still a reason, we form a quorum.
But, but he doesn't even know you talked to Kate.
No, but I already shared my thoughts with Sean, and I shared them with Kate. What do you?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it sort of comes into the.
It comes back to the social media, so he share, if someone posted, sharing it with everyone, so everyone knows that, so what's the difference?
I mean, I think it sort of gets to Kate's point, which is very fact-specific, and I think it also sort of comes into this next slide here, which is what's a meeting? And I think the root question for our office, I think, even for a court is, was there a discussion, right? Because that's really what we're concerned about. Was there a collective discussion? You know, can I envision a circumstance where someone very discreetly says, I'm gonna vote this way on this, and then goes to the next person, I'm gonna vote this way on this, and there's no collective discussion? Perhaps. But I mean, I think you're really sort of getting close to the line there, and I think, you know, you wanna have those discussions in the public meeting itself.
So question for you then, when a public meeting, financial town meeting happens, obviously, the council votes on the budget, brings it before the financial town meeting. Financial town meeting happens, Jay goes on his page, puts, support the budget, I go on my page, says, support the budget, he goes on his and says, don't support the budget. Now, we have a little bit of conflict, obviously, there's three of us with three pages, and we're saying to the general public, support or don't support. Does that qualify, because now you're sitting here with three people, because you just said, going to different pages?
As long as it's the same page, right? It was on the same thread, it would.
I have a constituent page for me, for Ward Two, and I'd say ninety percent are Ward Two residents. And so, like, we'll go on, we'll ask questions amongst, it's just a private group. If they have any concerns or anything, they can reach me that way, my cell phone or my email. So I leave myself wide open to get in contact with. Is that an issue if he has access to my page as long as he doesn't comment?
I mean, again, it's very fact-specific, but I think the situation you presented is, is not really, right? You're not really having a collective discussion, you're saying, this is how I intend to vote.
Well, a meeting already happened, it already voted, we already shared our expression of our concerns at a meeting, and then we have a vote two days later, public, for the public to vote on. So obviously, we're trying to inform them and express something.
Yeah, I don't think the Open Meetings Act is intended to prevent you from discussing things with your constituents. It's not, it's intended to prevent those kinds of discussions with your colleagues.
But I think it's a gray area, because I think we fall into the spot, and we were just talking about this earlier, where you fall into this thing where you're trying to be open, and by being open, you break the Open Meetings violation act by being. and by being open, you break the Open Meetings Violation Act by being not open enough, you know? So it ends up being a, it ends up being a, a conundrum.
I, I think it's definitely something you just sort of need to be mindful of. Um, but, you know, I, I don't want you to think I can't talk to my constituents because I'm worried about the Open Meetings Act. I think the only concern there is, well, are your colleagues on the, the council then part of that discussion as well?
I mean, does that come into play when, when you're making, uh, rulings, if, if people violate Open Meetings violations? Was the intent here to, to violate this?
And, and I think it sort of gets, gets back to the, the council one's point, which is, there's, you know, there's violations, then there's also willful and knowing violations, we'll, we'll get to that, make it a little bit. Um, but, but yes, I think that's sort of the answer. Um, and I think, you know, again, the reason we're sort of spending some time on this is because it can be a little tricky. Um, but again, I think it's also because the point of putting these meetings in public is because, if you look at the definition, right? Convenient of a public body to discuss and/or act, right? It's not enough that you have your public body meeting, and you just go straight down the agenda, vote, 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 right? You need to have the discussion as well, that's part of the process, that's part of what citizens need to be aware of and advised of. Um, the second component here is, you know, a meeting only pertains to things over which the public body has supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power. So I think that really sort of comes into play, yeah, sure.
Question I have on that one, um, and it gets to jurisdiction and, um, supervision. This town council, like other town councils, sits in different formats, as, they'll sit for, as, for example, as the liquor commission, and they have a hearing. It's public. Is that hearing considered to be a meeting?
A meeting of the town council?
For example, I'll, I'll give an example, someone's got a license, and they come in with their own attorney, a liquor violation, well, let's not do liquor, let's just do a license. And, uh, the prosecuting attorney for the town may be the town solicitor, or might be someone else. The town solicitor might have to sit as the hearing officer, the council is hearing it, it's basically an administrative or a, a court-type proceeding. Is that the same as a meeting?
I mean, I think it, do you have a vote body, yes, do you have a quorum, yes, and then are you, is it something over which you have supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power? Sounds like yes, um, so, so yes.
But as we all know, in court hearings and administrative hearings, things change, because there might be settlement reached that particular minute. If you don't put all the probable conclusions in your notice, that it could settle, it may not settle, it might be continued, all of these things, you're gonna be in violation if one of those things happens, and it's not on the agenda.
I think, I think sort of the, the short answer, and we'll have a slide on this in a moment, is you can amend the agenda at that point, suppose something does happen, you settle.
But you can only amend it for informational purposes.
Right.
So how do, because it can't be a vote if, in fact, there's gonna be a settlement, or if the complaint itself is gonna be withdrawn. The only thing the council can do is then kick that to another meeting.
I think that that's right, if you were gonna then vote on approving the settlement, let's say, but it wasn't on the agenda, I think that that's a first.
So you can't, you can't do the vote that night by amending the notice? By amending the notice, you're just gonna kick it to another date and do the same thing?
Within forty-eight hours, yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks.
That's right. Um, so a couple quick scenarios, I think, to put some of these, you know, public body, quorum, meeting elements into play. The first is, uh, after-meeting trip to a diner, right? You have a great meeting, everybody goes out to a diner, um, you know, does that violate the Open Meetings Act? Right, you have a public body, right? You have a quorum, suppose you get good turnout, everybody goes after the meeting. Um, do you have a meeting though, right? Are you discussing or acting over something which you have supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power, right? Again, it's very fact-specific, every, every attorney likes the it depends answer, right? If you're talking about the paths, yeah, maybe you wish you had control or supervision or jurisdiction over the paths, but you probably don't. Um, right, that's probably not a meeting under the, uh, under the Open Meetings Act. But if you start talking about, well, what do you guys think about the meeting that's just happened, or the meeting that's gonna come up, right? Then you're sort of talking about something with either supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power, that would be a meeting. Um, if you haven't noticed it, it, it would be a violation. Um, second scenario here, right? Two members of the town council are meeting with two members of the school committee, really excited about it.
That really happened, that really happened.
And let's just suppose that, that that's less than a quorum of each, right? So it's less than a quorum of the town council, less than a quorum of the school committee, um, is that an Open Meetings Act violation? What do we think?
Could be, maybe.
That's usually the answer, but here, here it's actually no. Um, and, and again, it's, it's, you do the, the, the test, right? You do it, public body by public body, less than a quorum of the town council, OMA doesn't apply, less than a quorum of the school committee, OMA doesn't apply, right? OMA is like a light switch. If you have a public body, a quorum, and a meeting, it's on, right? You gotta have notice, you gotta have open meetings, you gotta have meeting minutes. If you're missing one of those three things, OMA just doesn't apply. Um, we'll do sort of these scenarios together, because I think they're sort of interlinked. Um, Google Documents, are you familiar with what those are? More or less, right? They're online documents that are sort of updated in real time, so if I'm on a Word document, a Google Doc, and Kayla's on it as well, and I'm making edits, she can see my edits in real time, right? Um, and we also put in reply all edits, I think it's sort of a similar idea. Um, and this gets back to what we're talking about with the rolling form, right? If I hit reply all of that email, and I'm telling everybody else, well, here are my thoughts on this, and then someone else says reply all, oh, here are my thoughts on this, then you're sort of having that collective discussion. Um, so we really do counsel, um, you know, public bodies, just be very mindful. Um, I wouldn't say never reply all, but you really have to be very, very careful.
So, for instance, if I sent out an email to the council saying, can you guys, we have to discuss this agenda item on, but we need to have some sort of meeting, is everybody available on such and such a date?
So you, you can, for scheduling purposes, you can.
Doesn't violate anything, if somebody.
Scheduling purposes is the one exception, you can, you can have discussions, be electing meetings, for scheduling purposes only.
We're just gonna touch on a few of the executive session topics that are permissible under the Open Meetings Act. But of course, we start out with the very large umbrella, the whole meeting, the public bodies are open to the public, you know, except when they're not. So, uh, we have a few, I think there are ten official provisions in the Open Meetings Act which permit executive session topics. Um, and they're very limited, and you're not required to go into executive session to discuss these topics, but you are permitted to do so. And, uh, the first one of this is five A one, and it's for discussions pertaining to job performance, the character, or the mental, uh, health of any person or persons. That discussion may be permissible in executive session, so long as three things happen. You need to give advance written notice to the person whose job performance or character or mental health they're to be speaking about. That notice has to tell the person that they can require that the discussion be held during the open meeting, rather than the executive session. And then the public body has to stay in their open call, and also in their minutes that they provided that notice to that person. If you don't have all three of those things, then it may be a, a violation of the Open Meetings Act. Um, and then moving on to A two, sessions or work sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation. These discussions may also be permissible during executive session. Litigation, it doesn't have to be pending litigation, it could be impending litigation, or reasonably anticipated as well. And then, just really quickly, for A four, investigative proceedings regarding allegations of civil or criminal misconduct may also be held during the executive session. But again, you're not required to hold those discussions during executive session.
Sure, public notice, um, right, so there's really two types of notice under the Access to Public Records Act, uh, under the Open Meetings Act, mixing them up. Um, and we talked about them earlier, right? There's annual notice, this is your, um, beginning of the calendar year notice, sort of your regular meetings. We're gonna meet the third Thursday of the month, whatever it is, you list them out, right? Uh, and then the supplemental notice, this, this is your agenda, your agenda for the meeting, forty-eight hours ahead of time. Now, as of twenty eighteen, it excludes weekends and state holidays in that count. So if you have a meeting on Monday, Monday evening, when do you have to post, uh, your supplemental notice by?
Thursday.
Or is it permanent?
Assuming Friday's not a holiday.
Hey, I like that, great, very, very answer, yes.
I've got one issue, I've got one issue with this. You realize state holidays, the way we have them in our statutes, we have seventy-three state holidays?
Seventy-three, really?
We've got holidays for everything, days of observance for everything, which is considered to be a holiday. And I've asked the sponsor of the bill, who changed that a couple years ago, a representative from Warwick, that he meant all the major holidays. But when we got jammed up in that, we found out that there were, there's many, many, many holidays on the books that aren't all celebrated, and the town hall's not closed. So I think I talked to you about it, and you indicated that if the town hall is closed, that's usually the measure, the, the standard.
Yeah, I would be surprised if, you know, this, all seventy-three are included, um.
Well, that's, that's one of the, it was, it was very unclear, because it's still a state holiday, or it's still a state day of observance, however, there's no closing of the town hall, so.
Well, for instance, Warwick has, um, some Jewish holidays that we don't have, but they're closed and we're open.
Right.
So it won't affect, because somebody else's clothes doesn't affect us, correct?
Fact-specific.
But I have an Independence Day.
There's our day.
The one I like is Ben Mondo Day.
Talking Red Sox.
Talking Red Sox. We have Ben Mondo Day, like in August thirteenth, you know?
I mean, I think, I think it is somewhat fact-specific, but I, I, I think the goal of that is that, you know, you're not using Veterans Day, um, you know, that doesn't count towards the clock, but, and Christmas.
That you're not trying to sneak it in when people can't?
Exactly, exactly. So I think, you know, those are sort of the things that we would think about. Although I will say, it's a relatively new provision, so, you know, does it apply to all seventy-three or not? And I suppose it's something on an open forum.
I have a question about the annual notice.
Yes, sir.
Getting up each year. We have a board in my office that we're not sure when they're going to have their meetings, and every year is different. We have, we may have five or six, we might have thirty or forty. So, we don't know, so all we do is we do the issues of the supplemental notices, actually, we do it more than forty-eight hours, we do it a lot more.
That's great. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, there's still a requirement to do annual notice, um, and, and the way the statute reads is you're regularly scheduled meetings, so to the extent that you have regularly scheduled meetings, they would need to be on there. But if it really is every meeting, we're not sure when it's gonna happen, um, I mean, maybe that, that is the answer.
Yes, we'll be meetings in the fall.
I mean, I think to the extent that you have some regular meetings, I would, I would try and put.
Or so, like, we might not have any, we can, we don't know.
And, and we'll say, there's no requirement.
You could always cancel meetings.
I mean, I think that's the other thing too, is that if, you know, you put them on your annual, and you don't ever end up having a supplemental, or you decide to cancel them, I mean, that's, I think permissible as well, I think there's an understanding there. You can't plan for twelve months in advance, every single time.
Have a little bit of.
All right, so posting requirements, there's three places, um, that your notice needs to be posted. First, of course, principal office of the public body, um, one other prominent location within the governmental unit, and then, of course, Secretary of State's website online.
So Secretary of State is a requirement, we know that. Is the town website another requirement?
Not under the Open Meetings Act, it might be under your bylaws or some other, um, provision locally, uh, but under the Open Meetings Act, no. That being said, of course, the floor, not a ceiling, if you want to post it on that, I think that's great.
No, we do, but, like, right now, we're having an issue with Granicus, so we're trying to get that resolved.
Sure.
So if it's not on the town website, any given date, because of them, or because of their format, and it's under Secretary of State, we're, we're still covered.
Yep, under the Open Meetings Act, just those three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The first two are paper.
Usually, yes. Um, we did, we did have a finding a couple years ago, there's actually a kiosk now, um, in the State House that they use for their, um, that the Secretary of State's office uses for some of their public bodies. And the second one, prominent location within the governmental unit, at the State Library in the State House, which we did opine that was okay, electronic, but, um, but usually, yes, usually.
So if it's like, if this was for your office, you'd have something in your, your office, and then you'd have something anywhere else within the state?
Uh, prominent location with the governmental unit, right? So we actually, we have an office in Davin and Providence, we have an office in Cranston, and we put in one in Cranston, one in Davin and Providence.
But it doesn't have to be in an AG office, could it be in?
Sort of depends on what the governmental unit is, I mean, I think the goal, obviously, is to provide notice.
Yeah, could they, could they put it in the capital, the capital of the world, administrative offices are.
I mean, I think if you thought that that was a reasonable way of applying notice for that, I think if it was our office, suppose we had a public body for the AG, I mean, I think, would you really expect it to be there? Probably not, you probably wouldn't expect it on the AG buildings. Um, and again, it's about providing as much notice to the public as you can.
Council, do you have questions?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we, do we have to post attachments? I know the Secretary of State website, we do not, as of right now, but on the town level.
That's a great question. Um, we have an example that I think might sort of answer that question in just a couple moments. Can I just hold your question real quick?
Sure.
Okay, we'll get to it, I promise, I promise. And remind me if, if it doesn't, if it isn't fully answered.
Okay.
So just sort of briefly, again, annual notice, right? Eight times locations, regularly scheduled meetings, um, that has to be available to public upon request. Supplemental notice, very similar to eight times locations, date posted as well, um, so we can know it was for forty-eight hours. And then this provision, statements specifying the business to be discussed. We're gonna spend a little bit of time on this, this is sort of the, the most litigated provision of the act. Uh, it's come before the Rhode Island Supreme Court three times in the past fifteen years. They have been very, very clear about what they mean, or what they think that statement means by the General Assembly. Um, and, and so, you know, accordingly, our office is, can, um, you know, focus on that provision as well. And, and so, statements specifying the nature of the business to be discussed, right? You want someone who had, who's not, you know, planning to go to the meeting to be able to know exactly what's gonna be discussed or done, voted on at that meeting. And so, if, you know, in the past, you sort of said, these are sort of per se improper agenda items, that just don't really tell us enough about what's gonna be discussed or done at the meeting, right? Old business, new business, um, I mean, that really could be anything, right? Treasurers report, police chiefs report, again, you know, on, on what? Are they reporting on fiscal year whatever budget? Are they reporting on crisis stats, right? You really sort of have to be more specific. Um, and that's why, you know, if you, um, you know, call our office and say, hey, we're not sure about this agenda item, the answer's always gonna be, be as specific as you can possibly be. Um, so a quick pop quiz here, uh, I'm sure this is what you all wanted to be doing, pop quiz on a Monday night. Here we are, an analyst, agenda item says, interviews for potential board and commission appointments. Um, what actually happened was a town council conducted interviews, but then they also voted, um, on the appointments. Do you think that that's sufficiently specific? No, right? Getting, catching on real quick, right? No, that's the Tanner case from two thousand and five, the Rhode Island Supreme Court, this was the first time they really looked at it, or at least the modern form of it, and said, no, that doesn't sufficiently specify what's gonna happen, right? Just says interviews, it doesn't say voting as well. Um, next agenda item's sort of small, it says, four communications, request for extension from Turner Scott received eleven thirty oh eight regarding petition of congregation Jesuit Israel. Um, that's the agenda item, what actually happened was the extension came up, they voted on it, and it was granted. Do we think that that was sufficiently specific?
Yes. Question for extension.
Nope, it was not, right?
No, it's a, it's a notice of a vote.
Um, and this is the analytic case, and, and part of it is, right, there's no notice of the vote, um, you can see this is actually against the zoning board in the city of Newport. Um, and the Supreme Court said, look, we don't know that something was actually gonna be voted on by that, it's under communications, it doesn't say to be voted on. Um, you know, the zoning board, usually they put the property itself, um, the address, there was no address here. Um, again, it's a twenty thirteen case, the analytic case with Supreme Court saying very clearly, no, that's not sufficiently specific. Um, and then I think this gets to your point, which is this agenda item here, seven B, approval of Rides Executive Pay Plan, singular. And Organizations Chart, enclosure seven B. What actually happened at the meeting was they discussed multiple pay plans, um, and that enclosure was not included on the Secretary of State's website. What do we think, sufficiently specific? Right, you caught the trend, no, and this is a ponorally case just from a couple years ago. Um, and, you know, I, again, I think the Supreme Court now, three times in fifteen years for a single provision of a state statute, that's a pretty, that's a pretty large amount of time for the Supreme Court to, to come down time and again and say, no, not sufficiently specific. And so, yes.
The supplemental attachments that get put on, for example, treasurer's report, we know, is no good. But if treasurer's report is followed up with a supplemental materials showing what the accounting is, whether it's a, a balance sheet issue, whether it's just a quarter for the year, that fills in everything, so if people get that, is that sufficient?
Is the attachment available?
Yeah, well, again, my impression was that it's always been available, because of the little paper clips that we see on our.
On your agenda.
On the agenda, that if you click onto it, it's there. Now, whether Granicus fixed it up, or the Secretary of State, I can't really respond to that, but if that is provided to, um, any particular person that's out there, um, either on the web, or to pick it up, that document that's attached to that part of the agenda explains completely what the treasurer is going to be discussing. So the question we have is, do we have to get into a more specific agenda item, or does that attachment suffice?
So, here's sort of my take on it, I will say, the Supreme Court hasn't weighed on this, in on this specifically, other than to note that if you say you're gonna enclose something, you, you should actually enclose it, so. Um, and if you're gonna do that, you should absolutely make sure that it is included on the Secretary of State's website. You know, on the one hand, I really like the idea of people having access to these reports at a time, completely being able to look through them. On the other hand, um, I'm a little concerned about if it's actually physically posted, that you're not also printing out how long that report is, so that people who don't have access to the internet, you know, still have access.
Well, because the only question I have is, if the finance director or treasurer gets up here, and it's satisfactory as to what the posting is on the agenda, without a document for people that are either at the meeting or people that are looking at the web, the first person they're gonna ask is, where's, where's our copy? She doesn't really have to provide a copy under the Access to Public Records Act, or the Open Meetings Act, does she? She's referring to her own work product, and she's, she's notifying her, her client as to what's going on for the past month. So if we add, if we have the supplemental portion of the materials attached to the, um, uh, agenda, everyone's getting it. But if we do it the way Supreme Court has said, we just have to list what she's gonna be talking about. But if we do it the way Supreme Court has said, we just have to list what she's gonna be talking about, the town really doesn't have to, uh, supply that to the general public, do they? Which goes back to trying to be transparent, it's less transparent.
Well, if if it is submitted at a public meeting, I mean, then, um, you wouldn't be able to withhold it under one of the exemptions, yes.
Oh, no, I I agree with you, but they they wouldn't theoretically, they wouldn't be able to get it that particular night. You'd have to come in after the fact and make an access to public records act request.
And and that's why I I sort of like the idea of, you know, being sort of proactive and providing that report. I mean, I think the real answer is we don't really know just yet. What I will say is, if you are gonna provide the report, make sure it's enclosed as an attachment.
Right.
Online, and make sure that there's physical copies as well when it's posted. And the other thing I would say is, out of an abundance of caution, just given how the Supreme Court has been very, you know, particular about this provision, if you can say treasurer's report and then dash, and then just title what the title of the report is, or what it's gonna be talking about, treasurer's report dash.
All right, that's one of the reasons why we're having you here tonight, so we can be as, um, transparent as possible.
Sure.
For all of these agenda items, and and then still include the attachments, so the general public has a little bit of your point.
I think that's probably your safest bet, is to sort of, you know, belt and suspenders, eh? I really do.
Yeah, if I could jump into it, I think, you know, like Sean was saying, part of the issue with just saying treasurer's report and then attaching it is, all three places where that supplemental notice has to go has to include the entire report with it. And that includes the Secretary of State's website. So even if you have something on Granicus that doesn't take the place of Secretary of State, so I mean, the first thing is to make sure that if you're gonna go with doing an attachment, that it really is in all three places where the statute says the notice has to be posted.
Oh, the hot copy is gonna be, would be impossible, because it might be four hundred pages.
Uh, so then maybe that's not gonna work for you then. And I think that's another reason, too, like like Sean said, it's kind of a belt and suspenders where, you know, the way to 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 be safest is have the agenda item in and of itself be sufficient. And then if you wanna go ahead and provide the whole report, maybe just on the Secretary of State's website and online, then do that, too. There's no reason you can't do both, and then the citizens are happier because they can, you know, access all the materials, they're not asking for them. But at the same time, the agenda itself is already sufficient in and of itself without the enclosure. So you kind of cover yourself in both ways, and hopefully everyone's happy more or less.
Well, at at one point, a couple of years back, it's been going since, but we used to have ward reports. And that was more for each council. I mean, now we, a new business opened up, um, something like that. So now, if if I wanna bring back ward reports, so say I put ward two, and I would be discussing all stars bar and grill new to the community, Christmas tree lighting in Phoenix on Thanksgiving night, that's that's fine.
Yeah, but you'd wanna list, you know, each of those topics that you're talking about under ward report.
Seven, because I know we we used to, sorry, sorry.
And I think, yeah, I think the way to think about it is if someone who had no clue what you were talking about, maybe hasn't followed town council business, looks at this agenda, are they gonna be able to figure out what's being talked about? Or are they gonna be sitting at home the next day and they hear what happened, and they're like, oh, my gosh, I can't believe that's what they talked about? You wanna be able to point to the agenda and say, well, you should know this is what we're gonna talk about, because it says it very clearly here. So, you know, if there's ever doubt erring aside and including, you know, more specificity.
Okay, thank you.
Because something, I mean, I know in the past, we would talk about like after a big snowstorm, like during ward reports, like, yeah, the plow guys did a good job cleaning up ward three during the snowstorm, but technically, that could be an O M A violation, right?
If it's not listed on the agenda, yes. And I think I think that sort of gets to, if there's something that's sort of come up and it's, you know, less than four, it's twenty-four hours ago it happened. That's what amending the agenda is is sort of about, which is.
But it wasn't a discussion. Or or, or no, I'm sorry.
Like, can you wouldn't be able to say that under public comment? I would like to thank C P W for a great job they did, or they can.
Are you gonna say about public comment, or do you?
I don't think it's explicitly in the slides, but public comment, um, first, the public body is not required to have public comment, open forum, whatever you you call it. But if you do.
That's important.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Say that again?
Under the Open Meetings Act, a public body is not required to have.
Not required.
Under the Open Meetings Act, there may be something in your bylaws or whatever that requires it, that the Open Meetings Act does not. But if you do decide to have public comment.
For those watching at home.
It's public comment. So the discussions that happen or the comments that are made during that open forum discussion need to be initiated by members of the public. Public comment section isn't, you know, a free-for-all for the members of the town council. So if the town council wants to bring up a matter or make a comment or congratulate the the plow guys, I'm doing an excellent job, that's when you would amend your agenda. Public comment is specifically for members of the public to come up and ask questions or start a discussion with you about something.
So to be clear, public comment does not really include individual members of the town council.
It does not include them initiating the discussions. They can, of course, respond if they choose.
But the the response issue is when sometimes you get a little ahead of your skis, and that's where there's the make or break point of whether or not there's a violation of the O M A. So again, if the public initiates it, and there's a response from a particular councilperson, that may not meet the notice requirements, and then that same person becomes the complainant in the Open Meetings Act. And so it's almost, you know, you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't, because that person's requiring a response. Sometimes things get heated, sometimes things get emotional, and then there's a response.
Well, first, the public, members of the the council or the public body aren't required to respond to somebody making a comment or or asking a question of you. But I would think if a discussion was initiated by a member of the public and the councilman or councilwoman responded to that, then that would be okay. But if it goes beyond that and you start discussing amongst yourselves or maybe vote on something, that's when the Open Meetings Act, that's when you have a potential violation. But if someone brings something up as a member of the public and you think that this should be before the town council and you should discuss it, then you can amend your agenda to include that topic and have your discussion, or, you know, we'll we'll discuss this at the next meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's the safe one, that, right? Wouldn't it be, if you would like this to be on the following agenda, and you tell the town clerk, can you please put this on the next agenda so we can have a discussion?
But but I mean, there is a provision that says, you know, nothing contained herein shall prevent a member of the public body from responding to a comment initiated by a member of the public. You know, you're not, you're not supposed to say, if someone comes up, hey, I really wanna talk about the the sewer lines. Well, we can't, we can't engage with you. You know, that's, you're allowed to respond to those kinds of comments.
Is there a certain format to public comment, like in other words, do we have the right to put any limitations, guidelines, time constraints? Like where where do we, what are our rights in terms of, you know, saying, okay, well, you get two minutes to speak? Or, um, you know, maybe you have to like beforehand, uh, some sort of written, uh, notification of what it is you, yeah, like registration, almost of like what you plan on saying?
So the Open Meetings Act isn't that explicit? It doesn't say, you know, two minutes, but there's some, you know, where you can really talk about, like, this many topics. But I think it's forty-two, forty-six, I think that might be the statute. And it says that you can put a time limit on how long people speak, you can limit comment as well. Um, the the time period for the entire public comment, uh, session to to last. And you can either respond or not respond. But there's no, nothing explicit within the O M A that, um, says this is how it's supposed to run. So that would be a, your top.
So we're not violating any rights if we put a timeframe or a limit on time?
No.
Not under the Open Meetings Act.
No, how about, um, pre-registration? I know some communities, they'll have a sign-up sheet for public comment. They'll put, uh, Felix Apollonia, I'm gonna discuss, uh, water leak on New London Avenue. Is that okay to do? And and that's the only public comment, anybody who signs up and registers?
Right, well, that's, uh, goes back to the Open Meetings Act, where it doesn't have a specific format that you need to follow. So if that's the the format that your public body has chosen for your your open forum session, then.
Okay.
So be it, because you do have the power to limit comment, or someone says, oh, I didn't sign up, but I would like to to talk about it. You can either say yes or no.
And and I think part of it is that, you know, the Act doesn't require public comment, but it also doesn't, it it wants to encourage public bodies to do it, right? I think it's a good thing, certainly our office absolutely encourages public bodies to do public comment. We think it's a great way to interact with constituents. And so, you know, I think there's a recognition that if you're gonna do it, it doesn't have to be a free-for-all where someone can take twenty minutes for your time. You can put reasonable limits on there.
And public comment could essentially be assigned to certain parts of the agenda.
Absolutely.
Well, certain parts, you need to have, right, public carries. For certain, for certain votes, there's certain, like, if there's, if we're gonna put in like.
There's an issue that, yeah.
Like a liquor license that we have to allow, we have to allow.
It's in your bylaws, then, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's that's, but that's not, that's just because of our.
They they have to be, the public has to be addressed on those particular.
Correct.
So as we've been saying throughout this, the public body can amend the agenda if a topic comes up during the discussions that may not be on the supplemental notice that you posted. But if you're amending the agenda to add that topic, it is for discussion purposes only. Cannot vote on that topic unless there are two things, um, that are happening. If you're referring to another public body or another official, so if you think that something that came before the town council is more appropriate for the zoning board, then you can amend your agenda and say we're referring it to the zoning board. And also, if there's, um, if something happens where it's necessary to address an unexpected occurrence or something that's imminent, that you need to take action on to protect the public, then you are also permitted to go on amended amended agenda item there as well. But those are two very limited exceptions. So general rule, best practice, if you're amending your agenda, discussion purposes only. And now minutes, everybody's favorite topic. Your minutes need to include four things, the date, time, and place of your meeting, the members who are both present and absent, it has to have a link to every individual vote that is taken during that meeting, and of course, any other relevant information that's requested by a member of the public body. So that's really all your, the contents of your minutes requires. There's no specific format or, you know, recipe for the perfect minute. Doesn't require spreadsheet format, transcripts, but it does require those four elements. And of course, the more information you can provide in your minutes, the better, because that's what's advising your constituents. And you as well, those are your notes from the meeting. And then your minutes, uh, need to be posted, all unofficial minutes have to be made available at the office of your public body within thirty-five days of your meeting or at the next regularly scheduled meeting, if that's earlier. And then your official minutes have to be posted on the Secretary of State's website, within thirty-five days of that meeting.
What, now, going back quickly, I don't wanna go back to public comment too much, but if somebody comes up during public comment, how much of that is required to be into the minutes of that meeting? Like, who's who determines whether that's, um, important enough information to be on there?
You don't have to put any of that.
That's what I'm saying. That's 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 my question. So if somebody goes, well, how come only one of my comments was on there? It's not required to have any public comment in the minutes.
And that's why the O M A is a floor, right? Not a ceiling, so it's it's a fair minimum set of requirements. Can you put absolutely everything that's been said in public comment? Sure, but that, um, the case that we're we're citing, that the Warren case, the exact situation. Hey, I spoke during public comment, they didn't have it in the meeting minutes.
And it wasn't, okay.
And the response was, you know, respectfully, they don't have to.
They don't have to. So anything we do is above and beyond at that point, where if somebody goes, well, this person was on there and this person wasn't, it's it's not required.
Yeah, and you know, I think if you're doing it so you're purposely leaving out someone's comment, I mean, I think.
But if somebody goes on.
If you're gonna put one on there, you should put everybody, even if it's just a list.
True, yeah. No, no, some, and exactly, but if somebody goes on, somebody talks for ten minutes, for example, there's only so much you can include in the minutes at that point.
Exactly.
Reader's digest version.
You could refer to audio for more detailed information.
Sir, do you have a question?
An executive session. Employees have due process rights where they have the right to be heard in public. That also applies to non-employees subcontractors, individuals hired by the town where there's a performance review. They they have the same due process rights, correct?
You know, I think due process is sort of a separate issue from the Open Meetings Act.
The right to, the right of the person to say they want it in an open, in an open public forum. Same applies to non-employees.
Well, if they're if they're going to convene to executive session under A one, which is the job performance, then yes. Then then they have to provide notice to the person or persons.
Whether they're an employee or hired by the authority person.
It says person, right, so if they're convening under A one, that's that's absolutely right.
On, the statute on closed minutes, sealed minutes. Elected officials are privy to most of the information in sealed minutes. When an elected official becomes unelected and they disclose information from sealed minutes, sealed minutes, is there any liability?
It's a good question. Under the Open Meetings Act, um, the answer is no. I mean, might there be defamation or some other sort of, you know, common law or or other, you know, causes of it perhaps? Um, but with respect to that, I mean, the Open Meetings Act just really doesn't speak to that. Yeah, sure. And we're just gonna sort of, I know you guys have been very, very patient and and generous with your time, so we'll just try to close it out here. Um, and, you know, get to the penalties of of the Open Meetings Act, right? A court can declare, uh, injunctive release, or declare actions null and void, um, civil fines up to five thousand dollars for willful, annoying violations, and of course, again, attorney's fees and costs. Um, and I I know the councilwoman had a question about willful, annoying violations. You know, there there is some case law from the Supreme Court about what it means to willfully or knowingly violate an act. Um, and I, you know, I think sort of some of the buzzwords from that, and I think, you know, obviously, I won't talk about you solicitor, but some of the buzzwords from that are, you know, specific intent, right? Did you have a conscious, um, you know, understanding of what the law required and then nonetheless, you know, violated the law? This is a lot of thing I I think that our office and and other courts would look at, um, sort of in considering that. But but, you know, like, as Kate's been sort of stressing all along, it's very fact specific. And then our resources, um, you know, part of the reason, um, you know, that we're here, obviously, is to answer questions, but also to let you know where to go if you have more questions. Um, I think our website is really a pretty good resource. It has copy of, really a more robust presentation even than this, um, both the video and and the slides as well. It's got checklist for both the O M A and the APRA. There's guidelines for convening to executive session. I mean, all these are things that are really designed to foster compliance. We'd so much rather, um, you know, have the questions sort of ahead of time for the meeting than than the complaints after the fact. Um, and we obviously make ourselves available as well. We have an email address. We, you know, are certainly happy to answer questions from legal counsel, and same thing, um, via phone as well.
I think it's important to note that it's not cut and dry with a lot of these things. So for people from the public that think that we are willingly and knowingly doing certain things, I think it's just not that cut and dry. We run to that, I, just my first three years here with like ethical issues, when I've contacted the ethics board about certain things, where I'm asking them questions and I'm not sure, and I think, I mean, as long as, for me, I feel like as long as I'm trying to do the right thing, that it is intent-based for both things, whether it's ethical or O M A violations.
And, you know, I I certainly get that. I think that's that's part of the reason we go around and do these, is it was so easy, you know, we wouldn't have to do it. And I think, you know, part of it is that you have a great idea, right? You want these meetings to be public, you want these records to be public, and then think, well, what about this situation? What about this situation? It can get, you know, sort of complicated.
And it's unique situation. To this day, you probably see new things every single day, you know?
Exactly.
So I have two small questions.
Sure.
One would be, a lot of people don't realize, deputy clerk does the agenda, the clerk reviews the agenda. It gets sent out to the council just a preview, and we just, I just respond back if it's okay to look online. Now, being that, for instance, now, I don't go over every attachment, I just go over all the items, because I don't get all the attachments in the email, I just get all the items that are on the agenda. For instance, if, let's say, they, you know, were awarding a bid, and the name says Joe's Recycling Commodities, but it's really Joe Schmo's Recycling Commodity. Do we have to table that, or do, can we amend the name on that, is the question?
If you're amending, it has to be for discussion purposes only. So I think that that answers that question. Is it sufficient if it says Joe versus Joe Schmo? I mean, these are so fact specific, but I think the thing you would have to come back to is, is someone who's gonna sit at home know what we're talking about? And if everybody knows it's Joe Schmo's recycling, if you say Joe's recycling, there's only one Joe in town, and maybe it's obvious enough, then then maybe not. But of course, you know, the Supreme Court's been pretty, I would say, strict on that provision. Um, and so I I always think abundance of caution, if it can wait forty-eight hours or till the next meeting, it it should wait.
Okay, and the the same aspect of that is, if there's not enough information on the agenda and the council still decides to act, obviously, the council's held responsible. So we would, it'd be our responsibility and the solicitor's responsibility to tell us if it's not a proper agenda, right? I'm moving on to the next agenda. So that's one question.
I think that's right, and sometimes and sometimes you do make those decisions sort of in real time, and.
Yep.
Um, and I think part of the, obviously, it's forty hours notice, but maybe part of the the good thing about, I've heard clerks say, oh, we always put it up a week ahead of time, that way gives people some time to sort of look it over. And then, what do you know, three days before we find the error, um, it gave us a couple of days to find the error. We're still within the forty-eight hours, we put up an amended agenda.
Now, and the other thing, for instance, I just received a letter, a la, uh, three days ago or four days ago, about a group of individuals that sits in a certain area around here swearing during the meetings. So at the beginning of the meeting, can I, it's not on the agenda tomorrow, but can I address that the crowd needs to watch what they're saying or doing while the meeting, is that is that an issue with the agenda? Like, for instance, I had, the last meeting we had a swearing in of some police officers of retirement, and there was a lot of children and family members in the audience. And there was one or two in particular people using the F word in the back, just talking amongst each other. Well, I wanna address that tomorrow night and say, you know, if you're, if you have to swear, please leave. Um, I have thrown people off of vulgarity or whatever it may be, but can I address that issue tomorrow night? Like, for instance, behavior. can I address that issue tomorrow night, like, for instance, behavior of the audience at the very beginning of the meeting?
I think obviously that would be for discussion purposes only, so I think if you amended your agenda just to say we're gonna talk about, you know, the proper conduct during meetings, remember the public, we have to, you know, everyone conduct themselves in a polite manner, and you're swearing, I think that would be fine. Um, I've also seen certain public bodies put a provision at the bottom of your agenda that says, please refrain from using certain types of, of language. I think if you just amended your agenda.
Thank you.
Answered all my questions tonight.
Um, and I just, really quickly, I just wanna say that obviously this is a Reader's Digest version of our open government presentation. Every July, we give a huge open government summit, it's the full three-hour presentation, um, members of public bodies from all over the state, and also just members of the public, who are just really gung-ho about open meeting laws, and they come and they watch, and we provide a much longer version of this, uh, presentation, we also have a really handy-dandy booklet that we hand out that has the text of the statutes as well as summaries, there you go, it's beautiful, and prior findings from the previous year.
Sure, sure.
And also some additional resources from our office, like a copy of the form that we use, a copy of our certificate of compliance with the Access to Public Records Act. So I would just really push our open government summit next July, and that presentation is also available on our website, if you wanna get more into the exemptions from the Access to Public Records Act, or, or pressure on what we discussed tonight.
And is that booklet, I know you want us to go to the summit, and, and we will, but is that available for purchase, or can, can?
Oh, we can send it to you.
That, that would be terrific.
Can you have electronic?
You have electronic copies online, I mean, if, if you want a hard copy, we can, we can.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, works.
Does the council have any other questions?
Okay, can you do that?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, like the solicitor said about the finance report, and you said to put, like, the backup on the state website, there's no way of attaching any backup to the state website? Because it's not.
To supplemental materials.
Right, it's.
It doesn't, it doesn't permit you to attach anything?
No.
And I think then, that's even more reason then to make the agenda item sufficient without the, you know, attachments on itself.
Okay, cause there's no way, I mean, you guys didn't make it a law yet anyway to put attachments, there's no way of doing it.
Well, if you're referring to the attachment app through that, like, paperclip symbol on your agenda, then I think it would need to be made available on the Secretary of State's website. I'm not sure if you could just upload it as a full document, I don't know if that's an option, but if it's not gonna be available on the Secretary of State's website, then the agenda item itself has to sufficiently explain
Okay.
And, and, can we clarify that too, so that doesn't mean the whole report has to be there, but you need the title of the report and what the basics are, it doesn't have to, to give exact detail of.
The agenda notice?
No, the, the.
The finance report.
The agenda item for the finance director's gonna give her, her report.
Right. So just.
So can you give us an example of what that, that, that agenda item would, should look like?
Well, it shouldn't have to, it doesn't have to have the whole report.
Sorry. Sorry, well, but, but I mean.
How about, how about this, FY twenty, month of September, report on the finance department regarding revenues, expenditures, and I mean, that should suffice. Well, let's just look at some, let's, let's, it's more specific. Well, look at tonight's agenda, it says three, presentation of Open Meetings Act and Access to Public Records Act by the Rhode Island Attorney General's Office.
You couldn't put our names?
Right, well, so, so that's the question I had, do we, do they require names, do they require your presentation to be attached? Like, like tonight, I didn't know you had a presentation, so now, is that a violation, cause you brought a presentation?
There's no requirement to attach, to attach, and I think.
Okay, that's all, so that's sufficient enough there?
We think of, and I get the, I get the want to put attachments on, and I do think it's a good thing to get people more information, but there's no requirement to attach things. Um, agenda items should be sufficiently specific, sort of on their own, the attachments, I think, of sort of as an extra, extra add-on.
Right, unless you're specific, or you're.
It's, it's all very, facts, I mean, that, that's kind of, I, I know the refrain that you keep hearing is that it's all very fact-specific, but so much of it is with these two laws.
So I, I think it goes back to thinking about, could someone who has no idea what we're talking about read this and know what we're gonna talk about tonight? And, and what that requires for any particular item might vary in what that item is.
Can I ask a question, did I hear you say that if we put attachments on our own website, we must put them on the Secretary of State's site? Or if we are sufficient enough in each item, we do not have to put attachments, but if, if, or, or yes, no, is that?
So I would say that if you're posting your agenda on the Secretary of State's website, and it just says treasurer's report, like, with a little paperclip symbol, and that's it, then that attachment would have to be available on the Secretary of State's website as well. But if that treasurer's report says fiscal year twenty, revenues, expenditures, you know, blah, 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 for whatever the headlines were in October, um, and that would be sufficient enough on its own, then you wouldn't have to put the report there, but you could say any report that is coming before the town council for review will be made available, um, on Westlaw or.
That paperclip comes, that's a Granicus thing.
That's correct, yeah, that's not on the Secretary of State, that's correct.
That's not the Secretary of State, no.
Right, that's a Granicus thing.
So, so, on the Secretary of State, if it says finance director report, memo of September two thousand nineteen, monthly financial, finance report, uh, summary by department, uh, September finance report nine thirty nineteen, civic center, I mean, so how much, how much more do you need in there? You just said revenues, expenses.
Well, that's what I'm asking, because, like you said, normally, if you see the finance director's report, you know what that means. Without getting into two thousand twenty, September expenditures, you know, how much do you have to put in, cause again, with the police department, if the police department's making a report to the council on a quarterly basis, two thousand and twenty quarterly report from the police department, you really can't discuss personnel in open, so, you know, it, it's kind of limited, and he's, I don't think he's gonna go over arrests, convictions, things of that nature, but when you're talking about a department that's clearly defined in our Home Rule Charter as to what their jobs are, and are, again, readily available for everyone, how much more information do you have to put in besides, again, we know director's report's wrong, so director's report would be, how, how do you make it not wrong? With, with, with minimum language.
And do you provide examples of agendas that you think are good agendas, and, and do you ever have those available?
Not so.
Probably, it's so, it's so fact-specific, if, if the report is very general, then maybe the agenda item's a little bit more general, but if the report's on particular arrest statistics or whatever it is, I, I, I mean, I think the answer's always gonna be, and I said this before, and it's a little knowing of an answer, which is to be as specific as you can be. It doesn't mean you need to post the text of the report in the agenda item.
That, that's the point, yes, yes.
So, one of, one of the things I did.
But there's something before report and the whole text, that's somewhere in the middle that tells you more about what it is.
Right, right. So one of the things I did, you know, because you can go on, Secretary of State, you can go on every city and town's website, and they have their agendas. And I think the two most impressive agendas that I've seen, and I think, cause they've been scrutinized in the past, was East Greenwich and near Gansett, they seem, yeah, you brought near Gansett to my attention. So I went and looked at that also, um, but then I look at a lot of others, they're very, very similar, very little detail, and so that's, you know, I kind of was saying, okay, are we the only ones, cause I, that's what I was wondering, are we the only ones, and we're not the only ones, so it looks like, you know, few.
We're just ones that get complaints.
Nope.
And, and that's what was clear.
But, but the fact is.
Let's not get into, let's not get into the complaints.
I'm not gonna get into that, but, but again, and that, and that's basically how it was brought to me in the end, was if nobody complains, then we don't go looking. But if somebody complains, we go.
The fact is, we should have it right.
But we should have it right, I totally agree with that.
And, I think one thing I might recommend is, you know, you might, you know, certainly if there are towns that you, you seem to think are, are doing it well, you could look at. At them, for example, you could also look back at some of the past findings of our office, work with your solicitor, they're available, um, on Westlaw. Um, look at those Supreme Court cases that, um, Kayla and Sean talked about tonight, and it kind of can give you a sense of some examples of what's okay and not okay, um, either from the court or from our office, and then you can kind of, you know, base those principles and examples on whatever fact-specific issues and items come before this public body.
I have another question. I do practically all the licensing for the town, minus liquor licenses. My meeting for tomorrow night, I actually listed each person, one by one, by one, by one, to like, I really have to do that.
If each of them are gonna be discussed or voted upon?
Even though, even though, say, twenty-four hour picturing house license, I have to list each Dunkin' Donuts, each Cumberland Farms, Cumberland Farms plus their address.
I would say.
I think so, I think, I think based on what Supreme Court has said, yeah, I, I think so.
Like, for instance, for my December agenda, I have six licenses that are going up for renewal, that expired, well, actually, my next meeting in November, before December one. I gotta list.
And all of those are coming for discussion.
It's, my agendas would be the size of a dictionary.
I mean, you know, again, I don't think you have to, it, it doesn't have to be seventy pages, but you do have to, if you're gonna discuss a Cumberland Farms, and then a Dunkin' Donuts, and then other Cumberland Farms, yeah, I think you do have to.
It's, it is gonna be a dictionary, because it's different addresses, and I gotta list them all.
Wow.
Elix, be quiet.
Um, are there any sort of final questions, that, we would appreciate your time tonight.
No, first of all, I wanna thank the three of you who took the time out of your busy schedule and coming here tonight and, you know, clarifying some things for us, and we'll do our best to keep our agendas on, in line.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me, I did my best to be two weeks before.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Who's dog?
No, I, John's.
Hi.
It's sort of the reward for getting to the end.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, thank you.